Greetings brothers and sisters, I'm Professor Spira and welcome to a study session on lean or uric acid body types versus fat or mucus body types. And this is a question that I've been getting quite a bit recently. And it kind of makes me happy because it's something that a lot of people have missed out on or overlooked or don't really consider because it's definitely not a part of a mainstream type of way of looking at the human body. But for me, Arnold Eric's way of categorizing the body into two types is very simple, it's self-evident, it's easily and it's easy to observe and it's very relevant for understanding how to properly transition yourself based on what type of physiology you have. The type of physiology you have will let you know what kind kind of explain why you crave certain things, you know, why you crave certain things other than somebody else that's a different body type might not crave the same thing. Or why it's better for you to transition using a certain type of methodology versus something else. So we'll talk about all those things right now. So this is the Annotated Mucus Diet Healing System. And so what I wanted to kind of do is go over some of the different things, so we'll look at Eric's writing. Then we'll look a little bit at some of the things that I've talked about to try to help people understand the difference between these types. We'll also look at some examples of pictures of people and I'll kind of give a little mucus diet explanation as to what we're looking at when we talk about a physiology type and what all of this means. So if we check out Lesson Four Diagnosis Part Two, in Arnold Eric's Mucus Diet Healing System, you see fat and lean types. The bodily mechanism of the fat type is on the average mechanically more obstructed because he or she is in general an overeater of starchy foods. In the lean type, there is a more physiological chemical interference with the organism such as one being in general a one-sided meat eater, a condition which produces especially much acidity, uric acid, other poisons and pus. Okay, so right here we see that Eric says that a fat type is going to be mechanically more obstructive. What does that mean? These are going to be people that put on weight, that eat fatty food. Doesn't matter what they eat, you know, they eat fatty foods, but they tend to eat a lot of starch, which is that can transform a body into that kind, that type, you know, starch, a lot of kind of starchy things, fatty foods. And it's easy for them to put on weight when they eat these kinds of things. And basically what the body is doing is dealing with mucus. And this is from the mucus diet perspective. Cause you can explain these things in other ways, but when you're looking at it from this way, the body is attempting to deal with the elimination and removal of undigested, uneliminated food substance in a particular kind of way. And in the case of a fatty type or a mucus type, the body is trying to tuck it away in the tissue system. And so you get fat, you get this, you know, this sort of watery nasty sort of substance, too much of it. This is body has, you know, has, has a little bit of fat in it and it's natural, but the, somebody that overeats a lot of quantity of food and it's unable to be digested and eliminated. Is, you know, some of it's just gonna sit in the colon, some of it's gonna become this slimy lining along the sides of the intestines and you know, could create this whole sort of slimy situation, but over time, the body has to find someplace to sort of redirect this stuff. And in the case of people that we call overweight or obese or whatnot, which is what I you know, kind of my tradition of what I come from is being an overweight kind of person. That's what, that's just how the body deals with that kind of mucus poisoning. Which is that, and again, we're trying to offer a different way to look at things and change the language. That's the power of language. When you start talking, that's why, you know, on the forums and stuff, you know, I'm really kind of challenge people to take a look at the way that we think and talk about these things because that changes your understanding with your understanding that can help change your action. But if you're stuck in this world of calories and this world of metabolism and all these kinds of concepts and big boned and, you know, and all these kinds of things that are very not practical, they're not, it doesn't help anybody explain anything, especially in terms of elimination, you know, you can get stuck. Now with the lean type, there is a great deal of toxicity and acids in general. And, but the thing to understand here is, you know, there's different levels of all these, you know, you have and, and I have a theory, which I maybe I'll wait and talk about that till later. But just to give an overview, I kind of have a theory that there's definitely different levels. It's not just, okay, this is a fat type and lean type. Initially, it's, that's the simplest way to approach this. But I have a theory that there's different levels of uric acidness and fattiness in terms of, you know, there's some uric acid types that are going to be more toxic than others and that will come out in the detoxification process and the elimination process. But we will get to that a little more, but let's take a look at my note here. So if I hit on the 21st end note, this was my addition to this. So I say that Arnold Eric categorizes human physiology into two main categories. Fat, also called mucus, and lean, also called uric acid types. People with uric acid physiologies are often said to have high metabolisms and can seemingly eat a lot and not gain any weight. The misconception is that this person is healthier than an overweight person. This is often not the case as their body only handles mucus and pus differently than someone with a fatty or mucus physiology. This condition often occurs in people who are one-sided meat eaters, a condition that produces uric acid, other poisons and pus. Essentially, instead of depositing mucus as fat throughout the organism, such waste is converted to poisonous acid. Low carb diets that emphasize eating meat such as Atkins diet essentially transform one's body type from fat to lean. Thus, weight loss for people on such a diet is a negative proposition because they lose weight at the expense of creating much internal toxicity. Then people who participate in competitive eating are usually lean uric acid types. Contemporarily, when someone with a fat mucus type of physiology eats pus and mucus forming foods, it will usually result in weight gain. Eating great amounts of such foods is the cause of obesity in people with this type of physiology. So I also think some of what I write in Spirit Speaks is similar to that to what I have there, but you know, we understand physi- physiological types. This section under losing weight and physiological karma. We understand that the skinny patient who has a great metabolism is in actuality a uric acid type where the mucus they eat is burned by the toxic waste in their bodies. Obese people are usually mucus types and their bodies endeavor to tuck the uneliminated waste into the tissue system away from the heart and lungs. Depending on what type of physiology you currently are will tell you how much weight you will lose and what type of transition your body needs. And then I go on, when I met Brother Air, I was a 280 pound mucus type. When we, when we started talking about the diet, we never even talked about weight. All of the emphasis was placed on the diet with the knowledge that the weight is eventually going to be whatever it is supposed to be. It is easier said than done because the physiological battles that we face, because that we will face. As I lost weight, I traveled through what I call my perfect American size. Where, you know, basically as I lost weight, I would get into this, you know, went through the size, the size that was sort of acceptable by American standards. But then when I started getting skinnier than that, people that didn't know me didn't, didn't think anything, but people that knew me from the past, you know, they got concerned, they say, oh, you're man, you're losing a lot of weight and you know, where's all your, you know, you used to look so good and all this muscles like, and I was sick all the time and, you know, but that's, that's the thing is we have to change our mentality of why, what we think looks good. Because depending on where we grew up and what kind of media we've been indoctrinated by, we have a very, very mucus drenched view of human physiology and what looks good, what doesn't look good. When it comes to weight, you know, and that's one reason why we say with Brother Air, we never talked about weight, you know, because I was obviously interested in losing weight because I had tried for many years and was unsuccessful. And then when I would kind of bring it up, I think I brought it up to Brother Air one time early, I was like, well, so I would probably lose weight with this diet, right? And he just kind of looked at me, it was like, man, we don't even talk about weight, man. Just, just get into the transition, you know, just do what you need to do and focus on getting off of pus and mucus forming foods and let the weight take care of itself. So so let me go, there's a few other times where I talk about this and then when I'm working with a client in a consultation and coaching situation, that's always something I want to know. I mean, there's, my questionnaire is very simple. I have about six questions on my questionnaire that I use and you know, some people, when they go get a consultation, you get something with somebody and they, there's a long, you know, two-page questionnaire and might have 20 questions on it or something like that. And, and what's funny is like, if you, if you go to a, like a general practitioner or something like that, they'll, they'll ask all these questions, but very rarely will they add something that really pertains to diet. You know, they want to know, uh, you have a history of something and you're, have you ever been diagnosed with something? And is your parents and your dad have this disease and genetic and all this kind of stuff? But they never really get down to the nitty gritty, like, well, what'd you eat yesterday? Did you eat pus and mucus forming foods yesterday? Did you eat it for the pat, you know, what did you eat growing up? And if you can find out what kind of body type these persons are based on this, this, this two body type system, it can be very, you know, it's just easier to simplify and understand what's going on. Then, so down here, the last thing I'll read and then we'll get to some pictures. Physiological types, Arnold Eric identifies two kinds of physiologies, mucus lean, mucus and lean. In particular, these types refer to the way in which a particular body copes with digesting and eliminating mucus and pus forming foods. Mucus types are usually more mechanically obstructed and are overeaters of starchy foods. Their bodies tuck the uneliminated waste into the tissue system away from the heart and lungs. And when large amounts of uneliminated mucus are in the body, they become obese. Lean or uric acid types are characterized by having an inordinate amount of toxic waste, acidity, uric acid and pus in the body and are generally one-sided meat eaters. The overeating of pus and mucus in this type results in body breaking down the waste into very toxic chemicals that remain unlimited until, until detoxification. So yeah, so let's, so let's take a look here at these different types and we'll just, so I just do, you know, high metabolism skinny. So this is, this concept of high metabolism, we, we pretty much just discard that as not being useful. It's not helpful for mucus diet, understanding and detoxification, you know, this kind. And we pretty much consider this to just be a, you know, total kind of misnomer or just, this is not really helpful in understanding, in helping us understand how the, how the body detoxifies and eliminates. But we can see there's this kind of standard way that some people I guess in the scientific community categorize about it because, because you know, lean and mucus type, it's a theory. Ectomorph, mesomorph and endomorph, that's a theory, it's ways to categorize. Anything that we do in terms of observation and explanation is going to be a theory. The question is, what is the usefulness of any given theory? What theories can be discarded or put to the side? And what theories can we get something from? A deeper understanding and practical information that can help us on our journey? So with, with a lot of the standard ways of looking at it, they just say, well, this is how your body is and so, you know, whatever. They would have called me an endomorph, but when I lost a lot of weight, then they, they wouldn't, you know, they guess they'd, you maybe called me a mesomorph. At one point, maybe they'd have called me a ectomorph. There was one time when I got, I got fairly skinny in my transition and I picked weight back up. And, and so I've kind of gone in and out depending on what was going on physiologically, what kind of elimination that I was going through. But in this case, we would say, well, this is a uric acid type. You know, very, very slender and it probably could eat a lot of stuff and not really put on a whole lot of weight. And, you know, mucus type. And then this, this would probably, I mean, this mesomorph would also probably be put in that category of mucus type, you know, if we were gonna have to put somebody in those two. Because this, this could kind of fairly easily turn into, into this and go in that direction more so than, than this going into this direction. Unless this person got on the Atkins diet, started eating a whole bunch of meat or same thing with this. And then they, they could get real skinny. But again, that's not the way that you want to get skinny. You don't want to get skinny through acids. By overwhelming your body with uric acid to burn up the fat that's in your system. Yeah, that just common sense should tell you that that's not gonna be a, a good idea, but let's see if there was any. I don't know if this is the greatest example here, let me look at these skinny people. So now of course, this is gonna be some, some, some real super skinny people and, you know, we start talking about some of the you know, that, like anorexia and these, you know, like the so-called eating disorders, you know, we always look at, you know, first and foremost, when you, like Brother Air, there's a couple of videos where he's talking about this. I mean, they're, uh, these are people that, that will eat and then they, they have a, it's like a mental illness because they're looking in the mirror and they might be skin and bones or something and they will they'll think that they're fat, you know, or they'll count calories. You know, I watched this, this Oprah episode years ago that was kind of famous of, of a woman that was, you know, kind of real, kind of real skinny like this. And, you know, she basically, she, she could tell you every calorie, like it was just an obsession. I mean, she could tell you, okay, this and I ate this and, and she just, and mentally she looked in the mirror and thought she was fat. And you know, so brother, I mean, that's, that's kind of like a Western mental illness. Particularly if I think for, for Western, well, now it's probably worldwide, but just, you know, people that have that kind of money to even think like that, you know, and to be in a culture that, to sort of have that enter into the consciousness and it's, it is a real, it's a real thing because it, it's all, you know, it's all mental illness and it's physiological illness, whether, whether it's on the skinny side or it's, you know, it's on the, you know, on the obese side of things. It's, uh, you know, we just, we just have work to do, you know, because I'm not into any kind of, of like body shaming and judgment or anything like that. We're trying to look at this objectively and the only thing I'm concerned about is how can we eliminate pus and mucus, progressively eliminate pus and mucus from the dietary and allow the body to go through the elimination that it goes through and it needs to go through in order to get down into whatever the body's supposed to be. And so I, here I looked up big boned people because that, that was, that was what I was under the impression that was my thing. You know, I thought I was so big boned and I was destined to be big. Even though I looked at pictures of myself when I was really young and I hadn't really started picking up a lot of weight yet. And it's like, man, that guy's kind of, you know, like I, I sort of saw how I could have been skinnier. But, you know, but by the time I was, you know, kind of, I don't know, six, seven, eight kind of age, I was starting to really, you know, put on more weight and I just took that identity. Because a lot of the way we think about ourselves and body image and that kind of stuff is based on social programming and being treated a certain way based on how people around us view us and treat and, and part of our survival that's hardwired into our, into our brain is the, the need to be accepted. You know, feeling like we, we want to impress other people where we want to be loved and accepted. Why? Because there's protection in that, you know, but this can turn into various maladies that we see from different levels of narcissism to neediness to, you know, this, this, you know, very low self-esteem, you know, all the, all these things that you hear everybody else talk about. But it is based on the social conditioning and these issues in a, like I say, know thyself, people that don't really know who they are. And, you know, they're trying to find a way to reconcile the outside world with the inside world and they really, you know, and it's, it's hard when you don't understand that pus and mucus is, is an unnatural way to live, that we're not supposed to be eating that way and going through that kind of thing. So, yeah, so I guess we've, you know, break this, this whole thing down, big, big bone and stuff. So now, I mean practically, what, what happens is, so if you're, if you're too skinny or you're, or you got too much accumulation of fatty tissue and from, from mucus forming foods and starch and fats and all that kind of stuff. What happens is when you start to eliminate and you get slender and your physiology changes. So if you're on the skinny side, if you're uric acid type and the skinny side of things, you actually will probably pick, if you transition properly, you will pick up some weight. And one of the things that I recommend for a lot of uric acid types is to do a lot of green, green juices. And that's one reason, this is an observation and only we would have this analysis. But when I look at some of the, a lot of the, the raw foods kind of guru figures are uric acid types. And I noticed that some of them really have an affinity for green drinks and that makes sense. It makes sense that if, because some of them can't even drink fruit juice without getting lightheaded and kind of going through a whole, whole thing. Just physiologically, if the fruit juice is actually a little too aggressive for them. But green drinks are on point. So they'll, they'll sort of go, they'll, they'll skip over a juice fasting sort of level. And, or they'll skip over fruit juice fast kind of thing and they'll go from vegetable juice drinking and then water fasting and that's sort of their thing. You know, and I, and I kind of thought about this a lot, you know, I used to watch videos of of, you know, Dan McDonough when he was juicing and stuff and, and he was really, him and a lot of other folks was really into the green drinks. And I could never get excited about green drinks like that. I mean, I tried and I, and I do them, but I kind of have to almost force myself like if it's, if I know that I will benefit at a particular point from doing some green drinks and I'll do it. But it's, it is, is hard for me to get into something where I'm doing it every day because I just don't, my, my physiology doesn't, doesn't love green drinks like other people. But it does love fruit juice, you know, and it loves fruit. And so, so that's just something I kind of observed. But when I'm working with people that are uric acid types, you know, I'm saying, well, you know, get into the green drinks and, you know, get into the, you know, big, a lot of, a lot of vegetables, you know, the big salads. Because you're trying to neutralize those acids. When you do a lot of acid fruits and a lot, even the sub-acid fruits, you're gonna be more aggressive and you're going to have a situation where you are, you know, you, you can potentially eliminate and loosen up too much of that toxic waste that you put it into your system. You know, much too fast and then you've got the heart palpitations and anxiety and so on and so forth. And that's not good, so do, so a green drink is a great habit if you're uric acid type. You know, and kind of dealing with, and I don't know, some of these pictures are kind of it's kind of hard finding a, finding a thing. And then on, on the other side, for people that are a little bigger, that's, those are usually the people that I, if I'm working with personally, I'll, I'll push them a little harder because it's, it's in general, it's gonna be safer for, and this is interesting because a lot of uric acid type people, they want to do long fast. They actually want to try to skip over the transition, go into nothing but fruit or nothing but like, like a, like a mono avocado diet or something. And, you know, like they just had this real propensity for that. And they'll want to do these long fast, but then they'll normally will run into issues, they'll run into problems because they're going to, they're not, they're going too fast. And they're not neutralizing those, that deep toxic waste, that deep uric acid that is, you know, where it's in the form of uric acid. Now, if you're, if you mucus type, then, you know, head and, and, and you can, it's, it's a little safer for you in my opinion to kind of do the longer fast. You still got to transition into it because I don't, I don't ever tell people to really do long fast without really, really knowing what you're doing. But if you get your, just physiologically, what my experience was, was as I started to transition, I got to a point where I, I just started, you know, I sweated, I, well, first I would, I'd go through these big eliminations where I would blow my nose all day, every day for a week or two at a time. And, 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 you know, Brother Aaron, a previous video had talked about that. He had never really seen anything like that because he himself didn't go through something like that. But in my case, because I had taken so many pharmaceutical medications that suppressed my mucus elimination, I had to go through months of fairly intensive mucus elimination. So those of you that are, you know, blowing your nose for several days or a week and like, well, I've been mucus free for a couple of months and I'm blowing my nose and I'm, I'm sick and I'm, I was like, that's, you know, that's exactly what should be happening, you know, that, that's nothing. That couple of months here, six months there in the beginning, it's nothing. That's what this thing is about, you, this doesn't go, go away. Stopping putting these things in your body is the start. And once your body starts to say, hey, okay, this is cool, then it's gonna want to kick out all the, the unnecessary waste from the body and then, you know, and there's no rule in terms of time, you know, everybody wants to know, because I understand it's not comfortable. You know, I, I had to get myself in this mental space where I just got so, like I was, I looked forward to being sick, I mean, from that perspective and if, and trying to understand this, this isn't like I'm trying to make myself sick because that's what people think. But like I, I welcomed and looked forward to you know, having, having a fever and having to blow my nose like that, you know, because I knew I was eliminating.[1754.46] You know, because I knew I was eliminating. I was, I was gonna come up out of that a cleaner person. So, so anyway, so that's, that's, that's the main thing when we talk, when I'm dealing with a uric acid type, you know, you gotta be real careful. And, and so I don't try to push them into no kind of, you know, let's, let's keep it. You know, I actually with a lot of uric acid type, there was a couple of people that were former raw foodists. And they had got to the point where they no longer could digest food. They had been trying, they'd been taking like the probiotics and doing all those kombachas and all this kind of stuff. And, and I had to transition them into cooked mucus free food and that changed everything. Just taking that step back and getting into some big salads with, with baked zucchini or baked summer squash or baked acorn squash or the steamed vegetables. But particularly the cooked squashes, you know, helped tremendously. Baked banana, stewed, stewed fruit. It changed the game. And it was, and the reason that this is so good, those kinds of things are very good is because they're mucus free whilst not being particularly aggressive. If all you're ever doing is eating nothing but watermelon all day or nothing but grapes for, for, you know, for years and years and you haven't worked to that point and gotten rid of a lot of the toxicity, that's, it's gonna be too aggressive and you're gonna feel good for a while. But at some point, you're gonna really go through something that's not, that's not gonna be very pleasurable. And so, so, so with the uric acid type, I say slow and steady. Get into the classic trans, mucus's diet, you know, find, you know, go through my list of, I got the Professor Spears list. Of, I'll just go here real quick and we'll take a look at even what I'm talking about specifically. And, by the way, we're in the process of upgrading mucusfreelife.com. So by the time you see this video, website might not look like this anymore. We're upgrading things quite a bit because it's, it's time. Looking forward to releasing the e-course here in several weeks, hopefully. But let's see, list of, Spears list of foods. So like I said, really exploring the cooked vegetable, baked or steamed vegetables, acorn squash and these are all stuff that I use that I found good. You know, baked sweet potato, zucchini, spaghetti squash, steamed carrots, green peas. You know, this, this kind of stuff that is going to not turn slimy. And if you're doing enemas and, and always combine cooked vegetables with raw vegetables, you know, with raw salad to help elimination. But these are the kind of things that are gonna help with elimination. And you have, I got a whole list of, of different mucus lean things, starchy and fatty things that can be, that can be explored and used, you know. Because with the transition, believe me, I mean, I went through vegetarian phases and vegan phases and I ate processed vegan food at times. The principles that I always had, once I'd read the mucus's diet is anytime I had mucus forming foods, I was always gonna have a big raw salad with it. And that was just a great habit to have because the mucus forming foods are finite. So I'll go through periods of no mucus forming foods, but that raw salad is gonna be there. You know, the raw fruit is gonna be there. Or if I'd get into cooked, you know, some cooked fruit, it's gonna be there. So, so I don't have a problem, you know, I'm not, you know, everybody wants to, you know, be real, you know, real super hardcore. And it's like we, and that's good because sometimes we have to reevaluate where we place our how, our hardcore attitude. Because I think with some people, it's misplaced.